Everybody could be here at this time. So I thank everybody for coming. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It's going to be a little bit different as far as study session goes because it's like a working session and we'll need everybody's voices heard at this too. So I'm going to be taking notes as we go along. I have a few slides to show and I just want to thank everybody for coming. I don't want to take too much of your time. So our council study session rule of thumb is try to get as much in an hour as we can. And not everybody could be here, but we can record this for posterity and be able to get feedback as well. So welcome. Thank you very much. Just because there isn't a lot of us here, if it would be all right if you could just say your name and the organization or, you know, just a little bit, just to start us off. So I'm Kathy Schoff and I really have been in Erie my whole life and I just really want to try to talk about public restrooms today and the ability to have one or more than one in the city of Erie. So that's what we're going to talk about today. So we'll just go around council and then we're just going to bring it out. Just shout it out.
Melvin Witherspoon. I'm the oldest on city council. And I've been in Erie over 50 years. Came from Newark, New Jersey to play ball for Gannon. And when I came to Erie, there were underground bathrooms in the park. And I didn't understand why they had bathrooms underground. But now I understand the concerns, whether it's underground or above, that folks that are downtown with family on any given day, especially with little kids. And if they're playing in the fountain and they have to go to the bathroom, they're gonna go to the bathroom in the fountain if we don't have something for them. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mo Tru. City council and also been in Erie my whole life. This is my, during the day, I work with, I'm a work for the Erie School District. Been Erie School District for 27 years. So I can see the retirement coming up pretty soon here. I got a letter in the mail told me when I can retire, so. So that's just me. Glad to be here tonight and hear what everybody has to say.
Tyler Titus, they didn't pronounce, with city council. Came up to Erie in 2003. I feel like I'm giving you my stump speech, but really fell in love with the city. It was the big city. I've been doing social justice or social advocacy work since I came to Erie. Was on the school board for a while. As a small business owner and somebody who also runs a nonprofit here, just the need to have access for basic human function when we're downtown is long overdue. It really, I do think, puts a limit on many of our community members, not just those who are experiencing housing instability. But this is really, it's a, it's a big issue. I think it's a human rights issue. So that's, that's why I'm here and hoping we can get creative in creating some solutions.
Monica.
Hi, I'm Barbara. I'm running for council today. I want to also acknowledge that you'll be in the science department. And that you're just happy to be here.
Thank you for all your help. I'm not a media specialist by any means.
I'm Barbara Eric Romoloff, the city of Erie Relations for Gannon.
Dave Tamelos, a leader of our community, Erie Downtown Partnership.
Gary McHenry from Sisters of St. Joseph, Neighborhood Network with Sister Phillips.
Yeah, Sister Phillips, no words, the network, 85 years old.
Barbara Lewis, I'm a faith community nurse. I have worked with the homeless since 2014 with a program called Healthcare for the Homeless Partnership. It was an outreach program. Since then, I have transitioned into advocacy and we have now pulled together a group of persons with lived experience so that, and they found the voices of the homeless advocates. And I'm the coordinator of the network. I'm happy to be here. Thank you.
Suzanne Faulkner, also with the SSJ Neighborhood Network.
Charles Sheldon, a veteran of the community, a former clerk.
Jason Serr, a volunteer.
All right, everyone, here's Chief of Staff.
Hey, Chris, let's do this.
Thank you. So we'll have Barbara Lewis speak on behalf of the people with lived experiences.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity. So I was to have two persons with lived experience. One had, at the very beginning, told me, Kelly, that she couldn't be here. And I asked her if she would write something up and allow me to speak for her. So I'll be reading her words. The other young gentleman, I don't know what happened. He may have had to get to his shelter sooner than he thought. But I have a lot that they've told me to say, so I appreciate this and bear with me as I read this. So this is from Kelly. Good evening. My name is Kelly and Barb Lewis will be reading this on my behalf as I am unable to attend tonight's meeting because I'm currently enrolled in evening classes studying criminal justice with aspirations to become a probation or parole officer. I also work at the Mental Health Association as a center team associate with our homeless community, people with mental health needs and those with substance abuse issues. I feel in order to relay my thoughts and feelings appropriately, I must first reveal some, some more personal information about myself and my recovery and help you to understand why I feel my voice and experience could help in this matter. First of all, I'm not just an employee of the Mental Health Association. I am also a member. I became a member in 2017 after being displaced from my residence and abruptly becoming homeless on the streets of Erie. I was told by somebody about the center, MHA, as I desperately needed somewhere to utilize bathroom and shower facilities, as well as some of the other amenities MHA has to offer. Of note, MHA is a wonderful organization, but you have to be a member, you have to qualify to be a member, to be there. It was so difficult to access public restrooms in the, as the options were and still are extremely limited. I was grateful at that time for the center, but even this wasn't a feasible option all the time. And some individuals don't have this option at all for various reasons. I was chronically homeless for the next five years, also dealing with mental health issues and drug use, resorting to living in abandoned houses, in animalistic conditions, and resorting to a substandard way of living. I lost all dignity and respect for myself. And a lot of this was due to not having a proper place to take care of my personal needs as a woman, as a human being, who deserved at the very least that, as do all individuals, no matter what their circumstances or the details relating to that. I am almost two years clean and doing well, but I will always advocate for my brothers and sisters who are trying to get to where I am at someday. It's not an easy process and we aren't all blessed with the same resources or support, but I truly believe recovery is possible for anyone to some degree. I believe public restroom facilities would restore some dignity and alleviate some other problems directly associated with not having access to bathrooms for everyone in the community, not just for our homeless individuals. Thank you for listening and I greatly appreciate your time. A few other female comments, if I may. There were two females that were at the overflow shelter and one, one asked for her comments simply said embarrassed, ashamed, and depressed. The second young woman said, they're saying this of not having bathroom facilities, devastated, feeling no hope, sad, uncomfortable. It's very complicated. What do you do? You look around, but there's no place to go. A, one of the Amaya Soup Kitchen workers, who's also a Voices for Homeless Advocacy advocate, was out about doing some outreach one day and she met a female person with lived experience at one of the bus stops. It was in the wintertime and she offered to get her a cup, cup of coffee because it was cold. And the young woman said, no, thank you. If I drink it, I'll have to go to the bathroom and I have no place to go. We are very aware of the challenges of the homeless and some of the behaviors that might be disruptive to the downtown businesses and the general public. A lot of that is not their, of their own doing. It's because of their situation, their trauma, their mental illness, their drug and alcohol issues. But many of them are, don't have as many issues as that, but we do know that that is a problem and we respect the fact that that is a problem for some of the businesses. However, I did hear as an option, because I know the concern of maybe trashing the bathrooms or destroying them. And I did hear that perhaps this group might want to reach out to the upper room because I did hear that they were looking for a bigger building. And if they could find that bigger building, they would have bathrooms, they would have showers, the folks could get off the streets because it would be larger. So thank you for allowing me to share that for our persons with lived experience and thank you for all that you do for our city.
Thank you, Barbara. I did receive, excuse me, an email that I want to share from Mr. Charles Boo Hagerty yesterday evening. He said, hi Kathy. Unfortunately, I am not able to attend, but if I could, I would highly advocate for public restrooms downtown. I am so empathetic about it that I am willing to work with the city and pay for a temporary three-stall trailer that is equipped with facilities that flush and also has hot and cold water for proper hand hygiene. They are not unsightly and could blend in nicely until we have a more permanent solution. There will be many that believe that these would need to be monitored. Thus, the city may not have the staff to maintain such a facility. But I argue that while there may be a few bad characters that take advantage of this gift to the city, the majority will be thrilled to have their dignity restored by the privacy that this will ensure. And I will be reaching out to him because that would be totally awesome in my, in my book. So he goes, I know like any public conversation, there is controversy and I think this one is an easy one. And I am willing to work with all of you to provide a temporary solution that could be a win-win. Thank you. So that was from Mr. Charles Boo Hagerty. All right. Excuse me, I don't know if it's the light or whatever, but sometimes my eyes get steamy. We're going to have a film, or not a film, but a slide presentation of some various restrooms. So the first one here that you see is called The Portland Loo. It's very expensive, but it was originated in Portland, Oregon, and they sell them across the United States. And this one does have some things that make it a good fit because of the things. It says, in Portland, they get cleaned two to five times a day. There is also a number to report incidents inside the restroom for cleaning. And they said, while the automated restrooms focus on easy cleaning, the Portland Loo focuses on the crime prevention aspect of public restrooms. The automated restrooms provide too much privacy, which has allowed prostitution and drug use to flourish. Moving parts and maintenance costs are much higher with automated restrooms as the moving parts wear out or break and have to be sourced from Europe, unlike the local fixtures of the Portland Loo. The Portland Loo is built to order and can take as little as 90 days from order to delivery. Deliveries are prioritized by first come, first served and lead times can grow if the schedule is filled with current orders. And they're definitely manufactured in North America, in Portland, Oregon, and they also have them in Australia, New Zealand, and Southeast Asia. And they're also good for parks. I advocate restrooms not just for the downtown area, but for other places as they are needed and especially for our parks in general. So here is pictures of the Portland Loo, easy to clean and maintenance, prevents crime, inexpensive installation to run. And it says, the open bottom and top of the restroom allows sightlines and sounds to carry outside the restroom. The restroom should be sited with crime prevention through environmental designs that places the restroom in visible areas that prevent crime with open sightlines. And it says, they're expected to last up to 100 years and can be made in a variety of custom colors. In, they talk about servicing for the transit commuters, shoppers, tourists, resident restaurant goers, families, children, pedestrians, homeless, and attendees at special events. And once the foundation is poured and cured correctly, the Portland Loo can be installed in just two to four hours. And it talks about the top and the bottom of the toilet, no matter if you're looking up at the loo or looking into the restroom from a multi-story condo, it provides absolute privacy for the user. And also can be a work of art in that you can wrap vinyl to show artwork or advertisements. And I thought that was interesting because the Erie Arts and Culture did a great job with wrapping our electrical boxes and things. And it's been up for a couple of years now without any graffiti that I know of. Thank you, Monica. You can go to the next slide now. Okay, so this one, you can keep moving it. I don't know if you can see, there we go. It's smart, self-cleaning, vandal-proof, public restroom. So there's a couple of different companies that I have been researching. And as you can see, this one provides single use, I believe, and is, is simple, not really large or anything. Thank you. And this company is from Canada and there's the different pictures, but they also have their projects going into the United States. So we could order from them even though they're from Canada. But they also are expensive. It's called the Urban Blue, I believe. If you can take a look. And then these are from Romtech restroom buildings. And again, they have them throughout the United States. This is actually an international need throughout the United States and particularly many larger cities are addressing the needs of restrooms by having public restrooms. When I go into different cities as a tourist, we usually pull up to like a commerce building type of area where they have public restrooms and different walking trails and like there's a center hub where people can use the restroom facilities and then, you know, come back to them. Thank you, Monica. Here's another one. This one's in Lambsdale, Pennsylvania. They do them for golfing, golf courses, parks, recreational places. There's a big need for people, not just the homeless, but people who have issues with their stomach, bowel, colon, colitis, irritable bowel. I myself have been a person pretty much my whole life. I'm a healthy individual, but definitely I'm a type of person that always makes sure that there's a restroom facility nearby. Especially when you have children or you're biking. In my walks, I used to know exactly, you know, I would go to the Gannon Library as needed for a restroom or the Liberty Park when they had their restroom facility open with the EMTA there. And I know which places downtown. This has been enhanced because of the COVID pandemic. Many people closed up their restrooms for only business patrons. All right. Are there any more slides? Is that the last one? Okay, great. Thanks. So this is the one for park restrooms, golfing, remote. Again, I have the phone numbers of these different places. I've been in contact with them. They are happy to talk about how to set one up for us too. There's like five different companies. So thank you very much, Monica. Our next is the pros and the cons and the safety concerns. So I will open this up to discussion for everyone and I'll take some notes.
Kathy, you want me to take the notes and you can leave the conversation or he's?
Oh, I'll be okay.
Okay, okay.
Thanks. So anyone, we have safety issues. If they're going to be available, how are we going to keep it safe for people to use? They did address, when you have these restrooms, to try to put them in a lit area that is close to a street because when they're set far back, there can be some safety issues that way. So the easier you have them in a place that's well-lit, that's important. We have liability issues to address. The city does not have any public restrooms at this time, so we definitely would need to contact the solicitor. Some of the places I've been, they have a sign, this restroom is open from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. That has been some of the signs that I have seen. You are at your, you know, own risk. We don't want a child going in there and picking up any needles. And that is a definite issue with drugs. So we do have a concern with the restroom not being used for the purpose of being used. Dave, you had mentioned that you would like to talk to us. Would you be able to do that and share with us?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I didn't know if I would, I would talk today or not, but my name is Dave Tamelos. I'm with the Erie Downtown Partnership, speaking on behalf of Emily Fetschko, our CDO, who's unable to be here tonight. We've been working towards a solution for a public restroom for a while now. We have a pledge of support from the city already to tackle this issue and some money set aside for the design and implementation of a solution that's not only effective, but a fitting and beautiful addition to a public space, something that's worthy of being in a space like Perry Square that already has really great stage and the pump house and a solution that fits in with the design of the public buildings. I'm glad you showed the Portland Loo. That is one of the best practices, case studies that we've also researched as one possible route. We did receive excellent news today that we were awarded an ECRA Mission Main Street grant of $50,000 that is earmarked for this design and implementation as part of our energized, engaged and energized public spaces plan. We are not a social service organization. We're the Downtown Business Improvement District, but we do have safety ambassadors out on the streets pretty much every day, working to remove waste from the sidewalks and removing graffiti, interacting with those experiencing homelessness. And the needs for both cleaning and safety were greatly increased by the COVID pandemic. The safety ambassadors are out there every day, starting at 5:00 AM. And pretty much every day, they're cleaning up human waste on the sidewalks. You may not see it because they're out there before most people get to work, but it's a problem that we encounter pretty much every day. So echoing the words of Dr. Titus, we very much agree that this is a humanitarian need, a health and human safety and quality of life issue in downtown. We need to elevate the access to basic human services in downtown for all, all of the private. for all, all of the private investment in downtown, all the new businesses, new buildings, would be wasted if it's not surrounded by a public space that works for all and it does not meet the needs of a public that requires this robust third space to gather, connect, and play. And as we saw, other cities clearly have figured out solutions for this. So we're very much at the table and willing to collaborate on the solution. We want to remain connected to the efforts that council's doing to bring about a solution. We would very much advocate for something like this to be in Perry Square. That is a central hub for downtown activity. We just, the city just invested in brand-new cameras, brand-new LED bright lighting in Perry Square. So we feel that's a very safe, secure place that this could be monitored, speaking about safety in particular. And we also, as part of our programming, organize about 140 events in downtown every year, many of which take place in Perry Square. And there's a huge need for public restrooms. We often have to get portable toilets. And even with the restroom, we'd likely have to get portable toilets for our bigger events in addition to that. But it would be really great for, like Councilman Witherspoon was saying, for families who are coming down to the fountain, you know, those kids are going to the bathroom somewhere. It's either in the fountain or hopefully soon in a secure and safe facility. So that was pretty much, I just wanted to speak in favor of a solution and offer up all of the resources that we have for a collaborative approach moving forward.
Thank you so much, Dave. Thank you. I did talk briefly to the Erie Community Foundation, and they said there's like application process. And it has to have like a nonprofit entity. And the city of Erie is not a nonprofit. But I did mention, maybe if you, as the Downtown Partnership organization as a nonprofit, could perhaps ask them for money, too.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we, obviously, we get money from the Community Foundation for a ton of our programming. And we have a great relationship with them, working with them to craft a grant proposal that may be suitable for something like this. So that's definitely something we'd be willing to do.
Thank you.
That's all.
Sister Phyllis, you had spoke at a council meeting in the past year, and you had mentioned the need in your neighborhood. Would you like to share how you would like to have one in your neighborhood? And perhaps where possibly it could be located? Or Susannah with?
Hi, Susannah Faulkner, Sisters of St. Joseph Neighborhood Network. Really excited to hear that there's partnership around having one in downtown. I think that's absolutely essential just for the foot traffic. I know there's been times where I've been at events or just even during the day, especially in the summer. There's so many kids that come downtown. There's the dance event during the summer, the dance class. And there's nowhere for a busload of kiddos to use the bathroom while they come and get this free exercise and art and everything. So that's great. I will say, on behalf of all of us at the Neighborhood Network, we absolutely have to look beyond downtown for this, especially in the Little Italy neighborhood. We have Community Shelter Services, of course, is our largest permanent shelter. And that's right across from Columbus Park. And so I don't want to speak on behalf of Community Shelter Services, but I do know that they fund a permanent porta potty in Columbus Park, which is not, not a sustainable solution. There's, you know, maintenance concerns, different things. It's, it requires a lot of different coordination. So for us, our big concern is that in that Little Italy neighborhood, we operate and maintain many of the green spaces and public spaces in that neighborhood beyond what the city maintains. So we have eight community gardens. We have an urban farm. We have many just general green spaces. And we have two orchards and as well as Three Sisters Park, which is on 19th Street facing the cemetery. And so we employ, like a lot of you know, teens in the summer that work those gardens and whatnot. And so it is a, it is a true regular occurrence, and there's no other way to put this, of having our staff and teens cleaning up human waste along with needles and other things we are concerned about in our spaces that we maintain. And so we are trying to promote food security. And it's really difficult to get the 80 folks who have community garden plots excited about coming into the garden space when we are having to take care of those situations because there isn't a bathroom facility. And so I know, just from a quick look, the Portland Lou costs anywhere from $150,000 to $200,000. I do our grant writing at SSJNN. That, that would be almost as large as our largest single grant that we write, just, just as a perspective. Like, our annual budget is a million dollars. So a $200,000 grant is a burden on nonprofits that are trying to do community services. We can, of course, try to apply to those. But I, I would say, if there's any opportunity for partnership, funders love joint applications between municipalities and nonprofits. That is something we should definitely be looking at. There's a lot of parks funding that's available at the state level, at the federal level, even through, like USDA has grants. And so if there's a way for us to partner on that, I also think it's a great opportunity with maintenance to employ folks who do have lived experience. And so one program that I was witness to living in Denver was a day labor program that helped to maintain all of the public restrooms. So it was often, yeah.
No.
Oh, oh, I was like, yes. And so I think there's a lot of different things you can look at. But please, please do look beyond downtown because this is something where our doors are open Monday through Thursday for folks to come on West 18th Street across from the International Flavors Garden to get things like basic hygiene items, feminine hygiene products, toilet paper, food, all different basic necessities. And we're helping folks every day with that. And we simply, we do not run a community center. We run an office. And so if there is a way where we can strategically place that, for example, like our Field of Dreams, where we have our farmer's market, that is a very common area. It's on the bus route, West 18th Street. We really do want to bring dignity as much as possible to the folks who are walking through our neighborhood and just make it more, more livable for, for everyone. Because it is, it is something that now is, especially the nicer weather comes, like we, our garden team, all of us will be in those spaces and will be cleaning up a mess because we do not have this public resource.
Thank you very much.
Miss anything? Okay.
You speak so eloquently. Thank you.
Going to diapers, cleaning up diapers in the community gardens as well.
Right. So definitely, definitely a need. And I would like to see a public restroom within all of our city parks someday, for sure. And would like to partnership perhaps with Mill Creek. I know the COG has some grant opportunities where we have to find other municipalities to work with. So that was a good thing that you had mentioned that, Susannah, as well. Do we have any more people who want to say anything? Adam?
Thanks for making this an item and bringing this forward. I've got a short, itemized list of things to consider. One is, for the design and fabrication of it, I would like to suggest that somebody write a competition invitation and set up a criteria that it's a fixed fee and that the, the more interdisciplinary the team is that applies to win the competition, that'll give them a better score. We have so many stakeholders in this issue, the least of which is not property management companies, GCAC, the case management people. So I think someone could write a very creative competition for that. And then, you know, we have so many options on who would fund that competition. I would say, give it two months from award to present. Obviously, there would be some preliminary presentation to win the competition. There are practical issues that would be interesting to resolve. There's obviously the plumbing issue with freezing. There's also things such as, when we've done public restrooms, we tend, sorry, we tend to gravitate towards detention-grade devices and fixtures. They're the most durable. And it's been very successful in public restrooms, especially when they're outdoors. The other thing is, the design has to consider anti-ligature aspects. The, the maintenance, there would be, it would be helpful if there is a service button. I mean, I'm going to date myself, but it's going to be kind of like the Kmart blue light. If you just have a simple, if someone encounters a restroom and, oh my gosh, this thing needs service, it'd be nice just to hit a button and a light shine. So anybody that could possibly help that would be alerted. I think with the capacity that we have in this community to construct and fabricate things, I would strongly endorse that any competition team include a fabricator locally. And regarding the possible funding that may pay for this, you know, you may run into things like requirement to buy American, things like that. I'm a big advocate for anything that incentivizes the local community. And we've got so much talent here. I don't see why we couldn't have a team of designers and fabricators locally do this whole thing. It's just incredible what we're capable of in this community. And finally, regarding location, I know, I bring up property managers earlier because I know of circumstances, especially what we call negative spaces in the urban environment, hidden spaces, recessed spaces, things like that. I had a client, they had a stair down to a basement. We literally had to have a maintenance team in hazmat suits go and clean that subgrade stairwell. It was so bad. And I talked to the people when they were finishing up. They said they have never, ever been in such a toxic situation as they were like that. So to enhance, especially the core of downtown, but I, I would say, the 11th Street corridor is a bad corridor. The railroad corridor is a bad corridor because it has places people can hide and, for lack of a better word, deposit, you know? So, so finding where those locations should be, you can probably talk to property managers and find out. There's a lot of them around here. Besides that, thank you for having this study session. And I'm very encouraged that we're going to solve this in a creative Erie way. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. I have a question for Jason. Do you know if the McClelland Park has restrooms, the dog park? Are they?
It's, it's portable.
Oh, they have portable? Okay. And I know the Frontier Park has restrooms, but they're only open during certain times when they're there. I don't know.
Over there, we have, there's restrooms, I mean, in the leased building, but that's honestly not open, I mean, only when they're there. But I believe they set porta potties up near the pedestals. Those are maybe the first of April, I believe.
And there's porta potties in the R. West Bayfront, Bayfront area where the tennis splash pad is? Are there, are there porta potties there, too, for the splash pad children?
Bayview Park?
Bayview Park, right.
Bayview, I think we also.
Okay.
They're by the ball field, I think.
Right. So definitely grant funding. Definitely would like to collaborate with other organizations that might want to help us out. Do we have any other concerns or comments?
Kathy, what's the price ranges that you showed?
Well, those are pretty expensive. There's, like, they go from $140,000 to $180,000 or so, the Portland Lou. I do have another email from the Public Restroom Company, too. And they're pretty expensive. I was going to ask the... Who's the gentleman who has the hotel that people are outside having fun and there's a restroom outside? Nick Scott. How much that public, or he has a nice restroom down there.
It's a very nice place.
It is. So what I would suggest to help solve the issue of restrooms is people who have restrooms that are available to have a sign. Like, a couple days ago, a gentleman I was with needed to use the restroom. So I know that the Blasco Library has restrooms. So we drove to the Blasco Library. But the average person touring the city of Erie may not know that there's restrooms available. So I think it's important that, like even City Hall, we could have, you know, "Welcome to Erie City Hall" and restrooms available from 8:30 till 4:30 through the security. And, and just advertise it because people who are in this area don't necessarily know that they can use the restroom. So in my estimation, as a tourist, I'm always looking for those public restroom signs. And they do have them in other cities. So I love going to cities and looking at the city hall. And some have really historic city halls. And they have a bathroom available, most of them. So we just need to make signs for places like I could... Drew Whiting could not be with us this evening. And he's out of town. But maybe I could ask him to have a little restroom sign so people know when they go into the food hall that there is restrooms available. And if, another option that I have researched is the people who get a little stipend from the city if they open their restrooms. Let's say Calamaries, by chance, would say, okay, people can use our restrooms. And maybe we could give them a stipend or something. we could give them a stipend or something. They talk about, you know, getting a little tax break or what have you, but that is another option. So we have the pros and the cons, we didn't really, we know that they have to be kept safe, they have to be kept clean. I don't know if a seasonal worker could do it for the city, to hire like a parks person to be there so much through the day. We've talked about comments, does anyone else have any other comments? And brainstorming. So with brainstorming, anything goes, so just shoot out what comes into your mind, and we'll address it. Yes, Erica?
Kathy, first, I just want to thank you for giving up an opportunity to talk for all of you, and allow multiple stakeholders in. Another stakeholder, I think, that would be helpful to get their input and their creative ideas, would be our businesses from different areas. I think they would provide a lot of good input into the conversation.
Thank you, Erica.
I think we should think about overnight options for a restroom, because I think a lot of this happens, I mean, I don't know, my mother owns a building on West 18th Street, and thanked the sisters for putting the mural up on the building, my grandmother, and that just beautiful mural, it's really nice. And sometimes in the morning, my mother would say, come over here, you gotta clean this, you know, waste up. So after dark and through the night, people still have to use the restroom. What would be our solution for them?
Right. What concerns me is places that used to have their restrooms available. I went into Tops Market two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, and the one on 38th Street by my house had that area barred off, where before, I don't, hopefully, maybe it was just a fluke. But I went to a Tops on 38th and Peach, and I went to the restrooms there, and the doors were locked. And I was there for like a while, waiting, and then I just left, because it just seemed like a longer time. So if, like, large businesses, like country fairs, I think they had some concerns. And someone told me, I don't know if that's true, that you can't use the restrooms in country fairs anymore, I don't know if that's true or not.
You have to purchase something.
You have to purchase something. Any other open comments? I don't want to take much of your time, but I do want this to happen. Unfortunately, we don't have a grant writer with the city of Erie at this time, so we need to hire a new one. So if you have the ability to do grant writing, that's great, but like you said, Susannah, that is so overwhelming amount. But with other businesses and support, we could hop on the board of the need for restrooms and the safety, people that would be able to assist us. Yes?
County Health and Parks, check with them, because they do inspection, I believe.
I did call them, and I talked with them very briefly, and they said they do not have any money at this time for anything like that.
But inspection, if they're open.
Okay, once they're open, right. So I'm sorry, I should have been carrying this with me. So we talked about the need for public restrooms, we showed different models of public restrooms, we've talked about the safety concerns, we've had good, positive feedback with the different organizations in the room. Downtown Partnership received money from the Erie County Gaming Revenue, which is wonderful. I didn't mention number six, the possible placement locations. The Sisters of St. Joseph definitely need one in their area. I had mentioned I would like to see a restroom at all of our parks, for people who are biking, for people who are walking, for families, for people in need. Parks are a wonderful, wonderful thing, but they do need public restrooms too. So we brainstormed a little, and we're going to reach out to businesses and other stakeholders in our community. And so, now we have a wrap-up and schedule follow-up, woo, and I'm two minutes, 6:28. So when do you want to have our next meeting?
So I would recommend, this would make a great task force, like, I think moving this beyond study session and into like a public restroom task force, or basic needs task force, because what is being talked about here, I think, you know, getting a couple stakeholders together, some folks who have time to commit to it, along with council members, it just lends itself really well to being some sort of task force. So you could get window clings on bathrooms, or on businesses that have public restrooms, you could coordinate with, you know, the 24-hour gas stations, like I think of Lucky's across from Odessa is open 24 hours. Can we build some, you know, relationship there together to ensure they keep their bathrooms open, even if you're not a customer? Things like that. So I would just recommend to get more, you know, get more action on it, because this is something that's very actionable, and there's folks, you know, ready, ready to go on things, and so I would just recommend taking that route of it, so you don't get stuck in more idea, you know, so many people are going to have more and more and more ideas, but to actually like get an action plan going, I would recommend that course of action.
That's a very good idea, I like that. There's also people that have an app, there's some kind of an app where people can go to when you're in a city, and up pops all the bathrooms available for people too. But not everyone has smartphones and things like that too. I love the idea of the public need task force, and I think we did accomplish things today, so I thank you for taking the time and coming, and if you would like to leave your email address with me, if I don't have it, please do so as well. So thank you very, very much, and I think that's a wrap-up.